Why don't we stand, I'm going to make the order and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Okay, we're going to start the meeting with our representative from CUD. Tracy, we're going to let you.
So what has happened, or happened, what we are is part of what they call the Otter Creek Communication Union District. And what the state did is separate the state according to different districts. And certain number of towns are involved in those districts that are responsible for creating what the broadband in that area. Legislation has created what they, using broadband like a, like electric company or, you know, it's municipal kind of, those kind of things. So, under the state regulations, it's falling under those regulations in regards to like telephone companies or electric companies. This is a change. There's some firming up of that legislation that's happening and there's a number of bills that they're looking at that is going to define it even further and we're just kind of watching where those are. And they are House Bill H-159, H-124, H-367, and H-419. Since this is new, they're really trying to redefine what exactly it covers and, and the guidelines in which to do that. And it's really what we have is an oversight board that meets as well, and that's the VCUDA. And they're due to have their yearly meetings soon. Initially, what they were talking about is 60/40 buy-ins. And if you look at the meetings from, I said, no. I asked, there would not be any buy-in from Fairhaven for a request to nominate ARPA funds. So it was going to be an attempt to request any leftover ARPA funds for towns. So they went back to the drawing board. And what they've done now is there is USDA grants that we qualify for. And then they just found out about a grant program that's called the Northern Border Grants. And so they're shoring up infrastructure along the northern border. Because it's a, it's a underutilized area and so we are going to be able to qualify for that. So currently, it's looking like there will be no buy-in from the towns. We're hoping that's going to go forward. So the grant application for that is going in, in May. And then we'll wait to hear. The other thing is we've narrowed down it to a partnership and it's looking like the, it's basically FIDIA that they're looking at for this area. What they're going to be responsible for is for building the infrastructure and extending the lines. So it's going to be oversaw by our board and they're going to provide services and the, and the infrastructure to do that. Currently, there's also a program that they're running. It's a paid internship program that's run through Vermont Technical College. But it's going to train people to do broadband and to lay broadband lines. So if you know of anybody, it's no cost to the student and will be, and they'll be paid while they train. And so, spread the word to do that. So the final agreement with the current partner is with the lawyers. And they're kind of trying to figure all that out before they sign the final contract. And we'll know more about that also at the end of May or beginning of June. One of the things that's currently in the legislature that they're trying to figure out is what, how to set the rate. So how are they going to set it so that it's available for the average person? And what those rates are going to be. So like an electrical rate, they want to set it, the VC, the state board is going to have input into how those rates are set. And what probably will happen is you'll have a base rate for your basic internet. And then they'll have other degrees like premium internet or whatever. So, but those rates are being determined and kind of trying to settle that with them as well. They, they did upgrade the grid. They found out that what the, go figure, the internet companies had was not really what underserved populations in Vermont. So they had to, basically each town had to kind of try to remap what was unserved. And so they have upgraded those figures according to the data that came in. Everybody's feeling like it could be a little higher, but that they've done the best that they can. Ask Joe, literally, they wanted you to go door-to-door. And there were bigger communities going, we just can't do that. So, working with other community partners, a lot of the towns were able to determine, the larger towns, exactly where they had undeserved populations. And people know, we don't get it past this point, you know, these people don't get it. But currently, they feel that the upgraded grid has, they've done a good job and that coverage will be available eventually in those areas. So, right now, what it looks like is grants, everybody's applied for grants. We're getting where we're trying to work with the partnership to really tighten it up. Waiting for the legislature to finish regulation and kind of coming to a close. And then they're hoping within six months to start laying lines and expanding it. So that's pretty much where, a lot happened in the last couple of months. Things started to fall more into place, but it's a process, especially when you're trying to build a new utility. So I think that's been the biggest challenge. Any questions?
Yes, I was going to ask, normally when a state regulates a utility, they give that utility the exclusive right to service given areas. Will that be the same with this?
No, unfortunately, what's happened is each CUD has a different way they're doing it. There's a section of the Northeast Kingdom and what they're doing is they're trying to be their own. So what they're doing is they're trying to become their own kind of company. And laying their own lines and investing in that and in their own grid. It's different with each area, which is really kind of, I think, an argument that they've made at the legislature that we're doing it piecemeal. But every district, they gave them the power to negotiate what they feel is going to be best. So currently, what Otter Creek decided is there was enough of an infrastructure there already established that building on that was the best economically viable alternative rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. What's different than what's happening in the Northeast Kingdom, however, is up there, they don't have as much infrastructure. So they're almost building from new anyway. So they thought if they could own it as a private utility company, then they could, it would be better for their people. But it's a really high cost and they're trying to get funding to do that. Because you're talking about laying your own lines, getting employees to lay lines, fiber optic cable. All of the little nuts and bolts are pretty expensive. And we looked at that alternative initially, but the cost of just that stuff was just going to be like two-thirds higher than what we're doing now. And we're looking at like, what can we do that's more cost efficient? Provide the widest amount of coverage for people and is also economically viable for the average person.
So, but customers in this district will have the right to use other providers?
Yes, they do.
Gotcha.
We're not regating that, we're just, they're contracting to provide basic services and to finish the coverage that's not built at an economical rate.
Excellent.
So.
Thank you.
And they have to have a certain amount of buy-in as well. So it's not, they're not, we're not doing, building lines for them for free. I think it's a 60/40 split, 60% from the provider and the 40% being provided by grants and other monies.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I am just, just the one, so it sounds like right now, it's not going to cost the municipalities anything. If for some reason or another, the grants aren't as much as we thought or whatever, stay tuned, may come back talking with the members in the CUD.
They're trying to do as much as not. And I made it pretty clear that we didn't have any money to do that.
So we don't have any?
I said, we're not looking at, we currently don't have the funding to do that. And if that were to be an option, I think it would be something that they'd have to go to the voters for. So, we are the only small town involved, you know, we're talking about Pittsburgh, Brandon, you know, West Rutland, Rockland Town, Hubbardton, you know, all those small areas. And they aren't, you know, they don't have the economic means to do that. There's a possibility of other funding that could, maybe an increase in the USDA money or some other funding juggling to be able to do to get any short hauls. So currently, what they told, because I asked directly, is that there is, they're not expecting any buy-in from the towns.
So they've got everything they need, my question is, do you need anything from us?
No, currently, we're just, they're just moving along. And I want to, it's been a while since I've updated everybody and, and things have kind of come to a crossroad where they're moving to the next level. And I want to let you guys be aware of that. And there was a rumor out there, they were going to ask the towns for ARPA funds. And that initially was true. But when they got pushback from everybody saying, any ARPA funds that we've got are gone. They're like, okay, they ought to look at other funding. And that's when the Northern Border funding became available and we're able to access that.
Well, thank you for, you're doing a good job of representing us. Keep it, keep it up and stop back any time.
I will.
Thank you much, thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along, amendments to the agenda.
Actually, Glenn, I was going to move just for a quick amendment on, I guess, new business for about 30 seconds. It was about, it was going to be something that I discussed with Joe about some tree cutting.
So, so tree cutting, you're making a motion to put a, to put tree cutting in discussion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under new business, under new business, E, tree cutting. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Can we add an executive session? Can we add labor relations agreement under 1VSA 313A1?
I move that we do that.
Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from April 18th. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion where you accept the minutes as.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm not hearing anything, Bob, but if you're jumping.
Oh yes, I'm sure, aye.
Okay, but you're, I'm just going to say by exception, if I don't hear anything, you're there, you're an aye.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. No, you're good. I just didn't want, I just didn't want to leave you out. Okay, five minutes for public comment.
Yes, you're up. Okay, so my name's Alexandra Foley-Bonan. I'm here to express interest in the open board position on Rescue Squad. And Joe asked me to come and introduce myself. And I can just tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a registered nurse in the area for 17 years. I was born in Fairhaven. I live in Fairhaven now with my husband and three children. I've worked in various settings in patient and outpatient nursing. I am now one of the school nurses at Fairhaven in Castleton. I started that in October. Prior to that, I was an emergency room nurse. I have a really great relationship with our pre-hospital care providers. And I think it gives me good insight into helping ensure that our town has the most vital service. You know, I've seen firsthand the difference between good pre-hospital care and subpar hospital care. And that's, those are life-saving services. So I was approached by a colleague from the ER saying, hey, I know you've always wanted to volunteer more locally. This is available and if you're interested, you should look into it. I would love to support that group and also help kind of celebrate and talk up the work they've done. You know, we went from limited coverage over the last few years to really wonderful coverage. Able to help out other towns and also help with transport, such as become critical since COVID. There were many times where we would have, you know, a heart attack, a stroke, a critical pediatric patient or a trauma patient needing to be transferred to a tertiary facility and we didn't have the team to trans for them. So I'm very proud of what the Fairhaven Rescue Squad has been able to do to support those needs. So I, if you have any questions, I'm here to kind of introduce myself. And I am, you know, hopeful that that will be something that works out and I can, you know, provide my knowledge to the town.
Questions from the board?
This is for the board, the board membership, the Rescue Squad board membership?
Yes.
That's interesting, yeah.
Yep, this is, this is replacing John Seagland who was our rep before. My, my only comment is, thank you very much for, always, never turn a volunteer away. And with someone with your background, we're very fortunate to have you volunteering, so absolutely, my. So, looking forward to having you represent us on the Rescue Squad board. Do we need to make a motion and do that or can we?
Hey Glenn?
Yes?
As a procedural matter, we probably ought to warn her appointment for the next meeting, Selena. Or make another amendment to the agenda, one or the other, whichever.
It wasn't properly, it wasn't warned?
It's, we just, it wasn't on the agenda this time to, to make a decision, we were just introducing. So, Bob, I think you're right, if we want to make the decision, it should be on the next agenda or probably the next agenda.
Okay.
It just gives people a chance to jump on the, what, err, you know, sorry, I'm kidding.
Sounds like a good catch, Bob, I think, I think you're right, we need to properly warn it. Do, do we need to bring Alexandra back at the next meeting or would that be over? I think that would be, that's what I'm saying, we shouldn't need to, it's just, okay, so that's.
Do we need to make a motion to put that on the agenda or is that, we're just going to?
I'll also blast it out on Facebook and do a little advertising so that way everybody can say that they saw it.
Perfect.
Yeah, the one thing you might want to do is get with the select, or with the, the board at the Rescue Squad and see if they've got any upcoming meetings. And you could, you could at least, at least go to the meeting, even if you're not an official member until two weeks from now. You know, if they, if they have something going on in the next couple of weeks.
They do, I, I'm kind of in close contact with them just because I sort of work for DIA in the emergency room. And they have a really incredible staff up there, very thankful.
Feel free to come back and throughout the year, anytime, you're more than welcome to come back and update us. What's, what's going on during the course of the year? Looking forward to it. Well, thank you very much.
Take care now.
Thanks a lot for volunteering.
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay, anything else on five minutes for public comment? Nothing, moving right along, department head reports. Okay, chief.
We get three arrests, one for domestic assault and two were driving related, suspended or no license. We wrote seven traffic tickets, 18 in the morning, one parking violation, we had two car crashes. We had four overweight permits, 20 civilian fingerprint. I did a list of our activities if anyone to review, those are kind of the highlights. Calls for service in the last two weeks were 171, we got 148 for the year. In under notes, I just wanted to put out that Mark Lutal, the animal patrol officer slash patrolman, begins his third year and I'm beginning my 26th year of the department. I'll do the revenue for the next report. The only other thing that I have is we have a complaint on the dog on Apple Tree, remember the hearing? The dog is back. Got out again, the officer today said that they brought in 50 pounds of food. The caregivers are advising that that dog lives there. So, the dog is gone, or the dog is there, we'll probably have to come back to the board for another hearing on something else. The dog is dangerous, it's that dog that, you guys did a hearing on who was on the board, I think Bob and Glenn were on the board and Rich. So we got rid of the dog temporarily.
And so why do we have the muzzle order on, right?
Well, yeah, no, it was a out-of-town or a believed or, it was on an apple tree. It needed to be vacated out of town.
Did part of our decision from that, I'm just saying, part of that hearing, we made a decision, I don't have it in front of me, but.
Muzzle, but if it was a problem?
Muzzle, but if it was a problem? Was, was it going to, I, I, did we make a decision there that if there was a problem, it had to leave or we were going to do another hearing?
They did not review it, so you went.
I thought, I thought we already, I, I think there's something in the order that, that might address that, is the only, the only thing, I just would want to look at it.
So that's definitely going to surface to the head again in the next two weeks. So I will, I will do some return, research on that in the next few days and I will, I'll brief Joe and Quinn back. I'll tell you guys where that is, because I think we did do a muzzle order and if the dog was a problem.
The dog was, was, was gone, as I thought was the decision we made, so if there's, if the dog, if it is.
I'm pretty sure.
There's, there's, there's an action that can be taken. Long as we're, we're talking dogs for a second, because, but, a little bit before that, we had the dog issue on Scotch Hill. Has that been resolved?
No, I've probably got 10 more tickets to issue, I just sent four more out this week, $200 a pop.
I think we, this was a little we discussed, Joe, or?
Yeah, so what she does, we did start the lien process on her property. I have that written, I need to just get it to the town clerk, once we're back in the building. I will file that lien, she has what, 30 or 60 days, then we can foreclose on the property. What I'm hoping is that that will trigger some action. Because we, I have no compunction but taking that house if, if she's not going to follow the rules.
The issue is not unresolved, there are a lot of them.
I mean, is there, would we have any possible remedy for this short of going through with the foreclosure? I mean, is there any, is there any chance of some sort of mediated resolution or something like that?
We had that here as a select board meeting. And the only thing that I would, I would like to do is, I don't want to look like we're changing the ordinance for them, but I would like to change the ordinance that it's nuisance slash vicious dog, because that's the way I interpreted it when I brought it to the board. The language really goes towards vicious dog, not nuisance, so I would like to amend the ordinance so in the future, the board could do a muzzle order or something that might help us down the road. But again, it's not, this would be the precursor, but it's not to change the ordinance to help us here, it's just in general in the future.
There may be a to-do item to, to look at.
Yeah, I think, well, if we're on this, on that subject, we might also want to talk about dealing with unregistered dogs because apparently it's become, or at least it's explained to me that it's a problem.
Yeah, well, that, that, we already have that in the ordinance.
Okay, got it.
It's just my own patrol officer moved out of the area, so he's not as available he was. And he's talking about moving back this month over June. So I've been waiting to see, is he going to give up the unpatrol side? But he says, hold up, I might be coming back to the area. So I didn't want to train somebody new, because the guy doing it is very good, it's just, he just, he moved to Middlebury. So it hasn't been as conducive for him for the last six months. So that's kind of been the holdup. And once I get hit either back or get somebody in place, at one point, we were, we had 450 dogs on the list. And it was as simple as the unpatrols were knocking on people's doors. I just haven't had that resource this year to have them do that. And, or I type a police officer knocking on people's doors, which really doesn't fall under their purview, but, I mean, I do animal stuff also.
Good, thank you, Jim. Are you doing DPW?
I'm doing, I'm doing both, DPW and the town manager office. And if it's okay, I got notes scribbled all over this, so if I do town manager and DPW kind of mishmash. I will not go fast. We've noticed some water over the road over on, up on Scotch Hill. Yeah, the, we've been having a difficult time talking to the state, trying to figure out if we needed to permit or not. I did talk to VTранs District 3, which is where we are. And it boiled down to, if we got water over the road, replace the culvert. So that's what we're doing, we're just going to replace the culvert. And it's our road, it's our, it's our culvert, so that's what we're going to do.
Is that going to work?
We're hoping so, yes. We had, we had Josh Carver Hall out, the water guy, and he, they seemed to think this is the solution. That, that culvert was crushed and they tried to flush it out already this year with no success.
Okay, well, it seems to me that there's such a dip there that you're going to have to put a culvert, I mean, a culvert's almost got to be road level. And then, then fill over the top of that, is that the plan?
They're gonna, I'd, I'd have to go down and look, Bob, to see what it looks like, but it has to be replaced in kind as, as is. No deeper, no, no, no deeper, no shallower.
When that culvert was working, there wasn't a problem.
That's true.
So I, I want to start with the culvert, you may be right, Bob, it might take something else later, but I'd probably start with the.
I think, I think what's happened is the culvert's crushed over the years and the water's backed up. And where the water is actually over the road, it's not where the culvert is. The culvert's down probably two, two tenths of a mile farther down the highway.
So if you, if you fix the culvert and ditch it right, you should be okay?
Yeah, but I'm sure, and no doubt in my mind, it, because of all that water backup for so long, it's deteriorated that road where the sag is and that's why the water's laying there.
Yeah.
And that's going to have to be built back up.
That's what I was wondering.
Another subgrade in there and built back up to where it's supposed to be.
Have we investigated any emergency funding from the state? Because when we have floods like that, what kind of situations, they usually, they usually can be forthcoming with money that they have in an emergency fund. We've used it before, so I mean, we should just ask anyways. I know it's our role, but the state of Vermont uses it a lot.
I will, I'll reach out and ask, yeah, it's free to, and, and I did have a young lady send me a grant application today for small projects like this, so there are options.
Okay.
So last, last week, Carrie and I set up a booth for the career fair over at the high school. We had a good turnout, a lot of interest in, in the wastewater plant. We, hopefully, we got a couple of apprentices who are interested in, in either our water or wastewater program. As a heads up, the treasurer made an investment of $247,000. This is part of that investment, investment program we were talking about. And as a way to improve our revenue, separate, improve our revenue streams. This was a CD purchased for five, at 5% interest for five years. Working with Joe and Carolyn Laramie to get their, Joe and Carolyn Laramie, to help them get their $10,000 grant. This is the grant that the EDC helped them receive, helped them apply for and that they received six months ago. So they're moving forward with their project. Cemeteries are open and the water is on over off the, over off Cemetery Street. Just as a heads up, we always shoot for May 1st. Sometimes when it gets warmer in April, people start, they start, when they're itching to get out and start walking, but it's going to get cool again, so it's always a May 1st date we're shooting for. Week of the 15th, heads up, DPW will be out doing nighttime hydrant flushing. The crew is still out doing some springtime roadside mowing, just to kind of knock that back, to get a jump on it. For those of us, or for those of you who live in Fairhaven, May 10th is your tax day, don't forget to pay your taxes. And I, I wanted to recognize the fire department tonight. Jim's not here, I wish he was, but he's, he'll be here later. Those guys have really, they've done a great job so far this year. The, the fire chief told me they've had nine structured fires since January 1, which is, which is a high number. I think it's important to recognize how dedicated these gentlemen are and young ladies. They're out there kind of putting their life on the line to help save RP, our, our residents and other town residents and their property. So I'd like to say thank you to the fire department for, for everything that they've been doing. The chief, Chief Humphries, he said it quickly, but he is in year 26 of his career here in Fairhaven, so thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Tonight, so tonight should have been a water, we should have been talking about the water sewer budget tonight. But with the movement around, moving around the offices, we're one meeting behind. So you'll see the water sewer budget at your next meeting. Lights in the park and parking ride bids did come in on Friday. We had one bid for $849,000 and another one for. Uh, lights in the park, and parking ride bids did come in on Friday, uh, we had one bid for eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, and another one for seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh, the state and our, uh, engineer are reviewing those bids. Uh, we'll talk about funding those and awarding those at the next meeting. And that's what I have today.
Are we gonna be able to afford that?
It's gonna be tight, Bob, construction, we can, construction, we can figure out, the state requires us to have a, uh, onsite engineer for inspection, and that's gonna be where the trick lands, that's gonna be where, it's gonna be tricky to find funding.
Okay. Well.
I'll bring options.
Let's see if we can, well, let's, let's see what the state and the, and the architects say, but still a lot of money.
Anything else for Joe, or questions on DPW water source?
The only thing I got is, uh, that, uh, Scotch Hill, even if we can apply for a grant, we really need to get that done ASAP, can we do a grant after the fact?
No.
You can't.
No, you can't, you can't get re, you can't get paid for after the fact.
You can't wait a couple of years to get a grant to do this job, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, no, it, it needs to be done.
It needs to be done yesterday.
Yeah, the point I would, I would make, and, and I'd be happy to do that, I'm, I'm bored to death up here, um, if, if somebody, if you need a good cop, bad cop for Tobbins Estate, I'd be more than happy to be the bad cop, I mean, we're, we're looking, that's their driveway to two different state parks. Their state park season is starting, and by May thirty-first, they're gonna be coming to us complaining that that road is in bad shape, and, uh, they oughta be willing to help us. And I think, I think that them to, to just brush us off and say it's your road is fine and dandy until they need it, and then we'll say it's our road, you know, I guess you can't, you can't drive on it, but it's, it's ridiculous for them to think that we're just gonna, you know, magically come up with money, and there, there should, I would check with them about emergency funding, but, which I, I don't wanna repeat myself, but that. I'm a little bit perturbed with the lack of interest they have with that road at all.
The problem I have is that it's a dangerous situation.
It's a, it's a hazard.
Absolutely.
It's actually waiting to happen.
Yes, it is.
Somebody's gonna have blood on their hands for not acting on it soon.
Yeah, and I mean, the other alternative for us is to close that road until we fix it, and, you, uh, you wanna hear some people howl, howl then, wait till the, everybody gets, gets to the Barmazin State Park and can't come down this way to go to Shaw's. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's an artery for that, that road, and they should be willing to help. But, uh, I'm preaching to the choir, sorry.
Nope, good. Anything else? If not, let's move on to old business and the sidewalk discussion.
Yeah, so, uh, the board's been talking about doing a, a sidewalk replacement schedule for, I don't know, it's been a couple of months now, uh, we talked last meeting a little bit about what that would look like, and I, I developed a, a plan, a scheduled replacement, uh, a sidewalk schedule, sidewalk replacement schedule, um, kind of like what we did for the, for the roads. So if you see it in front of you, I have year one through ten, um, the funding, the road, and then how much it'll cost to do the sidewalks on that road, uh, in each, each, uh, each year. These, uh, these figures, year one through ten, these are for complete replacement, this is the complete replacement costs at a current, uh, at current cost per square foot. Not all roads will need to be completely replaced, not all roads will have to have their entire sidewalk completely replaced.
So my only question, Joe, on this, I looked at the price tag and everything to do with complete, but I'm saying, this is just saying, this is what it could cost us if we did complete for everything. But if we went in year one and said, we're gonna spend eighty to a hundred thousand dollars on sidewalks, what's the recommendation? Year two, or my, my question for the rest of the board, I'm saying, when I looked at some of these price tags, like, year one, what I see down here is close to a hundred thousand dollars, I can tell you, we're not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on sidewalks. So, we can come back to, I think we, I, we, is it, I didn't, and I don't know what the number is, uh, but is the number more reasonable, say, if we put a plan together to help Joe in prioritizing it, is it seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars a year, and we pick? What's gonna be done this year, what's gonna be done next year? And, and those without going and having to ask for, we fit it into our regular budget, uh, so I, do we have, I, I know with some of our projects, I think we probably had seventy-five thousand or something like that, we had money in a sidewalk fund.
Yep.
We probably might have an earmark to get the work done in the project downtown, or not?
Uh, I think there's a hundred thousand sitting there that's not earmarked for anything.
That's not earmarked, so, so what I was, just curious what the rest of the board members thought, to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna eat this elephant the same way as a cheeseburger, one bite at a time, uh, let's take eighty thousand dollars. A year's a goal, and let's start taking some of these here, like I look at, uh, the ones you had in, on year one, was Grape Street for seventeen thousand five, it looks like you had, we had a, a few others, uh. Furnace, uh, was, was the one that, uh, uh, that was sitting here, uh, that wasn't Grape Street, it was Furnace Street, that was, uh, seventeen five, I look at some of that, uh, that really needs to be done anyway, Furnace is pretty bad. Uh, but, uh, can we do that and do? The Veterans Memorial is fourteen thousand, you're not, and, and we were talking, uh, probably a few meetings ago about trying to do something there, so we do, if we do Furnace, Veterans Memorial, uh, and, uh, it looks like Third Street at something like forty-two, see, I'm trying to get something that comes close to that eighty to a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, do we have to, uh? We don't necessarily have to hold it to eighty, or seventy, or a hundred, whatever we decide, I think, but we just gotta.
Do something.
We gotta do something each year.
Well, I mean, the one.
Go ahead, it's come through.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, Bob, go ahead.
The, the other thing, the, the thing, another funding source could be, um, DPW carry forward, we might be able to sneak another fifty thousand or so, and get another street done, and, you know, one of the ones I would, I would think that we would try to get as soon as possible, although Grape is pretty rough, but, um, I was thinking, uh, Pine Street with the high school traffic. Might be one, that's an expensive one, but it's, it's probably one we should try to get as much done as soon as we could.
Good point, Bob.
I guess my thought is, I'm, I'm seeing here that the bottom line figure for replacing everything is about four point three six one million, I mean, if we're doing it at eighty to a hundred thousand dollars at a time, then we're, you know, we're looking at way out into the future here, I mean, that's, 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 it's something that's not gonna be covered in ten years, certainly. Um, I guess the question is, is there going to, is there any source available, or is there any long-term planning we can start doing, as to where we can get the full amount of it, rather, I mean, you know, certainly, I agree that we need to do what we, we need to use what we have right now, but again, if this is gonna be such a, a serious expense, then we probably need to start planning now for something else.
I.
Good.
Good read.
Good, good point, I, but I, I look and say, do I wanna put four million on sidewalks when I need to put a new DPW barn and salt shed in? And I'm, I'm sorry, but my sidewalks just fell further down on the priority scale, because we, we gotta take care of the roads and.
I'd love, I'd love to see them all done at once, but it's not gonna happen, that's pie in the sky, I do believe.
Well, that, that number is to replace the entire sidewalk.
Right.
Uh, there are, there are good portions of the sidewalks, we just need to do like Mr. Green has said, treat.
There's tons of them that aren't that bad.
Yeah.
Right.
And there's tons of them that are in really good shape.
Yeah.
I mean, is there, is there any way we can kind of clarify what, what we need, what really needs to be done, rather than the entire, than the replacement cost for all of it?
So with, what I was, at the last meeting, I was asked to put together kind of a timeline, uh, based on routes to, to and from school.
Okay, right, right.
In year one, that's, you know, kind of what I was thinking, this is where I see a lot of kids.
Right.
Um, so we could go out and just, you know, the, the Veterans Memorial, we know that that entire thing needs to be replaced, so that's, that's a given, but we can go out and measure out the bad portions of the sidewalk, and, and get a more, a solid price.
Right, 'cause you, you have a, you have a figure here, it's, it's, uh, seventy dollars a foot, so again, if we can kind of clarify what exactly needs to be done, maybe we'd have a better idea of what we need to, uh, invest in.
Or if there was a dollar amount you wanted to spend.
That's what I was.
'Cause if I just go out and start measuring, 'cause it's gonna take manpower to do this.
Well, sure, yeah.
Um, if we know how much we wanna spend, then we can go out and measure it up, and try to figure out what we can fit into, into that dollar amount.
Right, gee, I got, a thought of mine would be to, if we could get a couple of local contractors that would be willing to bid on these projects and do them, in, say, the DPW would win and hook out all the panels, and get rid of them, and then the contractor come in and report sidewalks. I think it would be a win-win for everybody, that would cut down on their labor costs to do the job, so we cut down on our costs to pay those, and, you know, kinda like a two-pronged approach to the problems. I mean, that's one thought, and, uh, maybe a contractor would, someone would wanna do the whole thing at a price, you know?
No, no, I.
Yeah, I would think, I would think that if we're, if we're offering some manpower, that's, that's a big, that's a big savings for anybody, particularly trying to find manpower, um, that would be helpful, and maybe we get the guys to be able to specialize in, in prepping a sidewalk, so they go in, and the week before it's supposed to happen, they go in there, and they spend two or three days prepping what they have to do, you know, so they become experts in it. But, in a few years, they may be able to do a few sidewalks, if, if we're, if we're fortunate, you know, and, and they've, they've acquired that skill. So, I think it's a good idea to at least have them do the prep work, or at least think about that.
Would it, would it be an approach to say, it sounds like we had about a hundred thousand dollars to work with in sidewalks right now, and I, is, is, would it be an approach to say, your max amount is not, don't exceed the hundred thousand dollars that you have there, but go, go out, look at? What we can do, I'd be, we're gonna learn when we do the first group of sidewalks, it's a little early to, to say, 'cause I, 'cause I bet that four million is, is, that's, that's spending the maximum amount of money replacing everything, now, it's gonna be, doing all is gonna be less than that, but it's still gonna be a big number, a number that I, that I think we have to, do everything I heard here, our DPW people have to work, we get local contractors and work, work with them, win-win for everybody there. Uh, but would that give, is that enough saying, hey, we'd like to do, is, am I making a, the right assumption that we'd like to fix some sidewalks if we can this year?
I, I think that should be a goal.
Heads are nodding, that, that you can't see here, Bob, everyone's head's nodding that they wanna do that as a goal.
Knowing full, knowing full well, we're not gonna be, unless, you know, unless, um, we have left a lot of money by an old rich guy that I don't know of, we're not gonna be able to drop four million in, in twenty years, and, so we need to, we need to pick a way at it, and we need to keep, it's an ongoing project.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be ongoing every year, just, you know, I don't know if you could do an entire street in one year, but you could do sections.
Sure.
A section here, a section there, just to make things improve.
Yeah, 'cause I looked at the price tag on Washington, for example, instead of doing Washington from end to end, yeah, you're doing from, from Heritage to the first street that's on your, you get, you hit that, what, what's that one gonna cost you to do that?
Washington Street, even though you have it on here, it's really not that bad, there's a lot of really good sidewalk on there, it might be a couple of sections, but, but.
And just fix the few of the sections that are there, yeah.
All right. Let me ask you this, Glenn, um, to your point, we have about a hundred thousand to work with right now, is this something that we can expect moving forward, or is this something that we just happen to have it right now, and we don't know whether or not similar amounts will be available in the, in upcoming years?
Well, it, it's part of the reserve fund, so the, the, the right thing to do is to re, replace that money, or at least part of it every year.
Sure.
So, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna eat up a lot of it, but it's going in the right place, and it's why we put those reserve funds together, you know, we, we won't be able to put a hundred thousand dollars back, and that's why I say, let's really consider carry forward money that, that shows up as a, uh, possible funding source. Um, you know, and I say that, and then we'll have a two-dollar carry for it, but, but, uh, let's, we're, we've been averaging around a hundred thousand, or a little more, in the DPW carry forward alone, every year, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
Yeah, that's wrong, Bob.
Oh, come on.
Yo, I mean, there's, there's that much there, but it's not replacing itself that fast, uh, they were down to under one percent last year, and there was seven thousand dollars deposited.
Okay, all right, well, I mean, it's, there's, there's money there, it's, uh, and it, it does fluctuate, but, uh, it's, um, it's a potential source of funding that, that we, we don't have to go out to the taxpayers and, and ask for more money, that's all I'm saying.
And, and to answer your question about how do you put it back there, when we do our budgeting this fall, uh, to Bob's point, it's the reserve fund, we may have to say, I don't see us putting a hundred thousand in there, but you, but may say, we're gonna put twenty thousand, or twenty-five thousand into the re, reserve fund, to, and use some, whatever funds we, whether it's carry forward, or. And that's why the, the hundred thousand you've got there, I probably, the more, the more we're discussing this, come back with what you can do for fifty thousand, and keep, and keep fifty thousand there in the reserve fund, is, is, is I, is what I'm leaning more towards, and I, because, hey, I, I think what folks are gonna appreciate, the fact that we're even, that we're trying to fix the sidewalks, that we have a plan, and we're fixing sidewalks. It's been, we've been a long time that we, I think the, the last sidewalk was the mechanic street?
Um, but we did mechanic street, and then we did the sidewalk in front of the school a couple of years back, so.
Right.
You know, we got a couple, but not.
So we.
Forest, Forest Street was, was behind that a little bit, but, uh, yeah, we, and it kinda makes sense to get that hub around the high school, which would, that gets to, gets me back to Pine Street, but it's, whatever we do, it's gonna cost us money, and we, we, if we're looking like, like Bud says, if we're, um, if we're making an effort, that's all people can ask for, and if they want more, they certainly can, uh, ask us to spend more, but I, I can't imagine too many people are gonna do that in this economy.
Joe, was the Safe Roots to School grant revolving, was that, did you guys do that, or the school?
The, the school, we were told, had to apply, didn't they?
Uh, that was a, that was a separate program, but yeah, we can do Safe Roots to School.
I was thinking, you might go address Pine Street on that, and then networking out from the school, might.
And, and I think of, when, Pine Street, I agree, we need, especially with the, now that Seventh and Eighth are there, and most of the foot traffic, when you have after games and everything, comes out Pine Street, doesn't come out.
Yeah.
Mechanic Street, the thing, though, I'd wanna caution us is, is, it's gonna take information meetings, talking to people, there's, uh, I think of the people who, those yards where their law, their grass now goes right to the road, and we wanna come down and put a sidewalk on, on part of their lawn, in their mind, we, we really, there's gonna need some, these discussions with people who live on Pine Street with the school, there's, before we, we'd want to partner with them on that grant, and get everyone.
Well.
On board.
Most people, most people understand right away, though.
Oh, I, and I understand we have the right of way, but I'm just saying, I, I think we can, by upfront talking with people and getting them on board, we can save some heartburn.
Yeah, oh, sure.
That's all.
Yep.
Then that's, we have to remember, that's gonna be, if, if we wanna go that route, that's three years out.
Oh, yeah, before Pine would get.
Yeah, just 'cause that's. Yeah, just because that's how the state operates.
That's how the grants work.
Yeah.
But that doesn't stop us. So trying to wrap up, do you have, on the sidewalk, do you have enough direction to be able to come back?
Oh, sure. So I have all, I have a year one, I'll, I'll start with Pine and then there's the Veterans Memorial, which we do have a cost for already. I'll see what that comes to and I'll start working my way up from there. Does that work for the board?
May I, may, may I be a program record for one second? Uh, the Veterans Memorial would be a wonderful place to showcase our historic slave sidewalk. Silence. I quieted you guys?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just looking and, and saying, oh, I understand what you're saying. I would want to make sure our sidewalk policy says when we repair, or when we replace, we do it in cement, concrete. And so I just want to make sure if we choose doing that, we're, we're doing it because we don't, we're not going to plow it in the winter and, and make it slick or anything and just use it to, so that it looks nice at the monument?
You, you worry far too much.
No, no.
Part of the, part of the problem in front of the monument is the loaders up on that all winter long. It's pounding down the granite curbs down into the ground also. So the granite curbs aren't straight anymore. And the sidewalk is really poured to the granite curb. It's going to be hard to pour a good sidewalk without straightening them, the curbs up first.
Well, you'll have to do a lot there, but, but, but I don't want to belabor the point. I just want to, I want to plant that seed.
No, I, I understood, understood. And I'm not totally, I don't want you to think I'm totally against it. I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to get there, how we're going to get there from here. But, but definitely the numbers for doing that, it'll be cheaper if we, because if you're just saying, put down what we already have there, you've still got to do a lot of work to your point. But.
Okay. So just, just to be clear, I'm going to look at Pine, look at Veterans Memorial just for now, and then get cost for those and then work my way up to fifty thousand dollars. Is that, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah. I, I, I would, I would start there because I feel more comfortable trying to put fifty thousand there.
Go with a grant for Pine Street, that's three years out. So can we do a two-pronged approach? Can we have a couple of them grant forthcoming and then jump over to the next one and do a section or two, just to keep this process going?
Sure.
It's a good idea. We could leapfrog back and forth.
And, cause couldn't we use grant match monies versus sidewalk reserve money if we went to grant? It gives us a little more wiggle room as well. And I think we're going to need a lot of wiggle room.
It's just time. It's money or time is what our choices are.
Yeah. Okay. So you're, you're comfortable with the direction?
I'll start tinkering with this and hopefully I'll get something back to you guys at the next meeting.
Yeah. I, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm happy. We're, we're moving forward on sidewalks. And that was, that's a, that's a big deal.
Can I add something to my manager's report?
Sure.
You said, you said we're making progress. Hey, Bob, this, this one's for you. We, Eileen did start working on that permitting packet.
Oh, great.
Yep. Her and, her and Phil are working on it. We're waiting till we get back in the office so that way we can button it up and get it all up on the website. So you, you should be, you should be seeing something in the next, next meeting or meeting after.
I think that it was a lot we make it, yeah, it was a lot, it'll be great because people walking into town need to know what they need to, need to do and they, it's, it's difficult if we don't have it all in one place. Somebody goes, oh yeah, why the? And that's, you know, they, they get that when they're halfway through their project and you know, oh God. So yeah, that will be great.
Oh, okay. Would like to, in moving along, would like to move on, skip, I'd like your permission to skip over the local emergency management while we're waiting for Jim to get here because I just realized Jeremy, I've got you sitting here. I could have done a lot sooner, but so you wouldn't have to sit through the meet, we, and move to under old business C, Assistant Health Officer Appointment? Cause, and we, we have a, a guest here tonight, if that's okay with everybody? Good. Jeremy, why don't you introduce yourself?
Uh, Jeremy, I've been a firefighter, volunteer firefighter for three years. I've been on Benson for about three months. I'm a senior at Fairhaven and I attend Stafford Technical Center for Public Safety and Criminal Justice. I have several certifications within intra-hazard, incident command system, stuff of that nature that can help with the position. This year, I may not work on getting my fire one and two certifications as well as my EMT.
Good.
Guys have any questions for me?
And, and Jeremy's here just for everyone to refresh everyone's memory. He's here to, for the Assistant Health Officer Appointment?
Perfect.
And so I think we talked, it was on our agenda at our last meeting. And we're, we, we checked on a couple of things. We were, we were concerned about whether you, we had a minor going into the role or, or not, but you're, you're eighteen and we're, and we're good. Our health officer feels very comfortable. I don't want to.
She does. Do you know the health officer?
Yeah, she's actually my mom.
And, but I, I think.
Full support behind us.
It's, no, but it's great to see that you're, you're involved. Any questions for Jeremy from other board members?
Here he comes, highly regarded.
Highly regarded, highly recommended. So what is our process? Do we make a motion?
Yep. So if the board makes a motion and approves Jeremy as the, the deputy health officer, we'll fill out the paperwork, have the board chair sign, and then we'll get that over to the state, get it to Danny and then off to the state.
I'll make a motion. We, we plan this assistant health officer segment.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Jeremy, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks for volunteering.
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
And you're more than welcome to stay for as long of the meeting as you want. I, I realized after I said, I should have got you early.
We are very interesting. We promise. We'll get more interesting as it goes on.
Why, why don't we, while we're waiting for Jim, should I move ahead? I'm going to move ahead and then come back to the emergency management when Jim gets here?
Sure.
So let's, let me move up to the new business, engineering study for the town garage.
Yeah. So, so this is another one of those projects that's kind of been lingering. Individual board members and the board is in, as a whole, reached out and said, hey, what can we do to kind of move this forward? And I think the way to do that is to start with a cost estimate, get a study to tell us how much is it really going to cost to build this facility? And that's what we're talking about today is the board interested in doing a study to determine cost as a way to move forward with maybe a bond vote in March to get a new building built as the end game.
Questions or comments from board members?
Well, my only, my only question is, this engineering study has got to take into account the subsoil up there. Got to do some testing and all that. We've got to determine what we need to get a, a good foundation fill in there. So we got to build it and stay there without sinking in the mud. And then along with that, you're going to have to have a substantial area for stockwales and stuff that's got to have the same base under it. So that's all got to be into that engineering study.
And what you're referring to when you say, when you're saying do borings or check the soil, you're saying that if, if, when we look to see what the cost and, you know, and everything of the garage, town barn, also a salt shed included in this study right here, he's talking about up at the airport where, where the salt, where we have the permit to put the salt shed in the town garage and, and those things. That's, that's the area that that you're talking about, Rich. Yes.
Got to be. I guess. I mean, we got.
And what, what we're talking is right now is to say, we don't, we, we need to get some kind of engineering study in order to know the numbers. Whether, whether you, if something were to say, the boring say it doesn't go to, to the airport. We still need to know what the numbers are for a town barn, salt shed. We, we still need to know what that.
Yeah. What I'm trying to say is there's areas where you're not going to have to do nowhere near the subgrade work that you would have up there. So that's got to be, you can't do just a little bit for a building and a salt shed and then everything else that's not manageable. You got to have a place, you can't sink a loader and you go and get a load of gravel. You know?
Bob, comments?
No, I, I, I agree, but that, that I assume would be part of an engineering study.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I want to make sure of.
Yeah. The, the other, the other consideration is, is town-owned land. Where else do we have for that kind of a project? So, so we have, in our way, if, if we, if we don't use the town-owned land that we have that we could use, we have to put into consideration buying property. And that would be, that would be tough. So that would be the offset for the subgrade work, I would think. But we'll see. Like, we got to find out what it's going to cost us before we can discuss particulars.
So if the board wants, I can, I can reach out to a couple of engineering firms just to get rough numbers before we release a bid. Is that, is that acceptable?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're not there yet.
And the money to pay for this, do we have, I always like to say, where's the money coming from for this right here? Do we have the money?
Yeah. So the, you know, let me take a look. So the, there is a town garage reserve fund that we've been kind of slowly building and there's sixty-seven thousand sitting there right now. So you could use that money for a study.
For a study.
It's, it, it's probably, that kind of money is probably the most well-spent that way because when we start talking about a real bid, a real bid in price tag, we're, we're in, we're back to the price of sidewalks and then some.
Agreed.
So that's a bond. As a bond issue someday.
Any other questions or comments on the engineering study for the town garage? Do you need a most, just?
I'll, I'll reach out. I'll start the process and the next meeting or the meeting after will have, I'll bring something for the board to, to look at and respond to.
Good. Under new business, the next item is letter of intent for the grant in aid program.
Yeah. So this is, this is a grant program that the state of Vermont runs. It, it helps us connect, what do they call these? Hydraulically connected segments of the road. So portions of our road that are a little wet, they need ditching, they need, you know, they need stone lining to improve drainage and support the road that's next to it. We have been doing this grant for, since I've been here. So for five years, the state's still funding it. But we need to send in a letter of intent if we wish to apply again this year. So I could use a motion and then a signature from an authorized representative.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we send in a letter of the intent, of intent to continue our participation in the program.
No, second to that.
Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Is this, now this, this entails lining the ditches with stone and stuff like that in places?
In some places, the state lays out, they'll have somebody come and inspect and say, you should dig a ditch like this or stone line it like that. And then they come back later and inspect to make sure it was done to their specs.
If we use their grant money.
If you use their money, yeah.
Did we, did we use their grant money on Sheldon Road? Where we put the stone in?
Big Low, Big Low Hill.
Big Low Hill.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's an example. I'm just trying to think of an example where we use the program.
Yeah. I think that put in a culvert and did some ditch lining and ditching.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can the motion include Glenn as the authorized signer?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Oh, well, I'll, I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to include Glenn as the signer.
Okay. We all know what we're doing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Authorized on to do what? To be, to be what's a time?
The authorized signer.
Just sign?
The document.
Okay.
Okay. New business E, tree cutting discussion.
Right. I had actually just brought this up with Joe. I, I had gotten a call about problems in the south, the south side of the cemetery. There were some trees that had come down and were possibly threatening the integrity of the stones that were there. I did speak about this with Joe. I sent him the pictures. And he did tell me that this is being looked at and apparently there's been some cutting of those trees already done, which, and thank you for updating that. I appreciate it. The only one thing I did want to bring up is that apparently there is a tree that on a adjacent homeowner's property that basically fell down, went over the fence and it's hanging in the cemetery. So if that is a cost item that we have to bear, I think that we should probably consider asking the homeowner to contribute because clearly it's not on our land. And, you know.
Are we talking the south side cemetery?
Yeah.
No, this is what, overall, this is overall West Street.
Right.
Oh, over here.
Yeah, there's the two halves.
Right.
Oh, oh, this is West Street, not here.
It's not the south side.
No. Okay. I'm sorry.
But the south section.
The south section of West Street. Right.
As, as our select board historian, I'll, I'll give you that title. Have we done any cost? In other words, I'm not saying that, that you've been around for a while, but have we had examples and it would be that we've cost shared or does the town just, when that happens, do we just?
Actually, in sidewalk, in cutting sidewalk trees, trees that are in getting to the sidewalk, we absolutely have done cost sharings before. One on Fourth Street, I remember, a big one by the, the, what was her name? The two brother of the pole anyways. We, we have done that in the past. And I think if you look, Joe, if you look someplace in one of the ordinances and it may, you know, it gets, we're, we're back to the right of way and we're back to that kind of thing like that. But I think there is some cost sharing involved. And that can be, that can happen and has happened before. Not necessarily in this kind of case, but it's the, the, you know, it's, it's the same precedent.
I mean, I mean, from the picture, and when I actually went out there myself, it looks like that the, the tree has sheared off almost at the ground. So it's just a matter of actually picking it up and removing it. I don't think that we have to do anything further than that, but still, if, you know, if DPW has to go out and take the time and effort to do it, you know, we're, we're essentially performing a service for the homeowner. So as well.
Exactly. And I mean, if, if it gets to that point, if the homeowner, and the homeowner has, has a house, house, homeowner's insurance that would cover that too as well. And by the way, Glenn, being a historian implies that I have a memory. I thank you, but I'm not sure.
You used it. It worked. We're, we're good. So do, did, did we get the direction?
Yeah. So the guys, the, the guys did go out and remove that tree, the portion that was in our, on town property in terms of cost share. I can, so what we would do is we would, if there was damage, we would apply to our insurance company and the insurance company would then try to recoup that.
Sure. Right. So it's on brigade.
Yeah.
Not saying we can't do that, but what the cost, cost benefit is on trying to scrape some money back from a homeowner. My experience has been that scraping nothing from homeowners, we'd end up in court. So it depends on how far you want me to go.
No, no.
No, it depends on how much it costs.
Yeah, right. Do the cost.
Thousands.
If it was an afternoon and two guys in an afternoon, then it's not that big of a deal. But it's, you know, if we're involving cranes and other things like that, you start, it starts adding up.
Sure. I'll, I'll take a look and see what it costs.
Do the cost benefit analysis on it?
Yeah. We'll see if it's, if it's worth it to, to go after. Yeah, we'll see if it's, if it's worth it to go after. But that has been removed though, that was new to us, and got it, we did, thank you for letting us know.
While we're talking trees, are there, because just in general in town, because every now and then you'll get someone to say, boy, this is a dangerous looking tree, or even if you get into, I don't know how we are in the park now, do we have some trees? We've been planting new ones, we want to look at, plant new ones, but are there some that you gotta look at that may have some work or some trimming that needs to be done?
Dr. Claire.
They done some in there this spring already.
They did some, okay, so that's, that's a.
There's some on West Street that are real iffy.
Well, there's, that's to say, there's, when you, when you go around, I was thinking even up, up near Academy, the one where the tree is all dead and pieces are falling.
It's quite a ways off the street though.
Yes, but I, I'm just, just wondering when the.
Right.
When they come down.
You can check the right of way, and that, believe me, I don't know the exact precedent, but the shared, the shared cost of that on Fourth Street is the precedent I would use. And it was the Butler Brothers. Claire, you're probably the only one there that knows where the Butler Brothers were, but it was their tree, but it was impinging on our sidewalk, and we got a shared cost to get it down, and, you know, it was a couple thousand dollars, so it only cost us a thousand dollars, and sometimes that is the real thing, is real money.
Yep, it is. Good. And I see, are we good on tree cutting discussion?
Let's look.
Good. I, we have Mr. Heller here with us now, so we're gonna go back to old business and talk about local emergency management plan discussion update. Thanks, welcome.
You're up. What you're looking at is the 2023 update of the local emergency management plan as required by the state. And this is an update to basically what we've had for the last several years since they went to this format. And we're looking for approval of several, actually several documents here. There's an approval form for the adoption of the local emergency management plan. There's also an adoption for NIMS, which is the National Incident Management System, which is the management system that is used nationwide to manage emergency incidents. This again is a, just a readoption of what's been adopted for the last several years. And also included in this is the Public Works Mutual Aid Law Plan, which is included as an appendix to the LAMP, which is a separate document requiring a separate signature. That again is just the same as what was done last year, there's been no changes in that. Just a readoption of that document.
And I see, Jim, that Ashley Bright is still the shelter manager.
Yes, yeah. I haven't talked to her, to be honest with you, so I don't know, but she hasn't expressed any interest, not to, I do know she has been to some trainings with, with the Regional Planning Commission on emergency management. Until I hear otherwise, or.
Could you check with her just to be sure? I mean, I want to find out, I want to find out that she didn't know she was still doing that.
Right, I could, I could do that, because again, this can be amended at any point as far as, you know, anytime a position is changed, we just change the contact information. The idea in the, in the LAMP is to have everything in one place, so somebody can look at that and have all the information, all the contact information for people in various positions in one place, and on both state level and local level. But yeah, I can follow up with her, Bob, and just double check that she's still interested in that.
Yeah, that's very, because that's good to know. I, I think that my, my concern came from, from last, last winter when we were having those fears that we may have to have warming places. And I think that, you know, our conversations back and forth during that time, there really wasn't, there was the overhaul plan, which is great, and it looks great, and then the very specific part of it. So Ashley would be part of that very specific part, and I think we should, we should make sure she's still on board. Now, I hope she is, because she's a, she's a great, great person and very organized.
Yeah, and she also has some, does have at least some training, some a little bit of actual training in how, how the systems design work.
I, my other, once again sounding like a broken record to you, Jim, but my other end of it was, would be that we get more specific, coming up with worst case scenarios, and, and very specific to the town of Fairhaven. If, if the, if there's three solid or five solid days of below, zero blows, whatever, do we open, do we open the shelter? What is the criteria for opening the shelter? Not the, this is pretty good, this is pretty clean for the, for the national, and everybody else in P M will be very happy with it, but I think we need, for ourselves, we need, you know, we need incident command, we need to know who's in charge, where we're going, and I think having, hearing that Ashley is involved, which, which is really good, that would have helped last summer, or last winter when that happened. So I just want to have for the town of Fairhaven, a very specific, you know, here's when we open up the warming shelters if we do, here's when we open up for flooding or whatever. If it's flooding, we got a real problem in Fairhaven, but, you know, that kind of thing. It would be, it doesn't have to be much more than a one or two page. Here's what we do, here's whose incident command, here's who goes where, whatever. And I would love to see that as well, you know, like, what have you done for me lately kind of thing?
Yeah, let me follow up with that, Tim, Bob, because I'm sure that somewhere in the pipeline, we could get some boilerplate that we could work with on that.
Yeah, I'd be cool to work with that, and, and, you know, just, I think that the worst thing that happens, if you watch, if, if you watch any hurricane or tornado or anything, if just, you can just tell the ones, the people that are organized and ready to do it, and you can tell the folks that aren't. And you can, they're scrambled, and all of a sudden, they've got a problem that at least would be organized. They would, you know, who, like, who called Dougie Wood, for instance? Who, who makes that decision? Who, who opens up the shelters? Who, who has keys to the shelters? Who can start and maintain the generator? That kind of stuff like that. We need to be specific enough for that, just because the weather has been very unpredictable in the last few years, and I, and I don't expect it to be, to get all, all that much better. And, and people expect more than they did in the past. I mean, obviously, I grew up here, I never heard of such a thing as a warming shelter, until somebody asked me about it last year, and I, I didn't really have an answer. And that's why I called you, or texted you, but, so yeah, I think, I'd be more than willing to sit down with you and just, just, we could go over that, and it is pretty boilerplate, I really do think that, but I think we need it, and I.
A lot of that, a lot of that also conceptually, Bob, is covered under your incident management system, and ultimately, the emergency management director for the town of Fairhaven is the town manager. Everything else flows from, from that position.
Wait a minute, what's your title?
Yeah, I'm coordinator, which means, okay, which basically, he makes a decision, I make it work. And what you end up with, what you have, what you have under NIMS, and anybody with a, some ICS training would know that you have the concept of unified command, which means all of your emergency services have a seat at the table, and decisions are made and presented in a unified manner. So anything like this, your comment is well taken as far as being able to tell the people that are better prepared than, than others, and what you'll see a lot of times is that correlates with the ones that do it. Where you have the problem, where you have the problems, you learn very quickly what works and what doesn't work, and you can replicate that. The first time you do anything, that's why they call them disasters, because disaster drills aren't generally disasters. But you learn, you learn from that, and you also learn from other people. But by, by having the, the concept down of how you're going to approach a thing, who's going to have the seat at the table and be making the decisions, and then having resources that anybody can get a hold of in one place to make the calls to determine, okay, who's in charge of this, who's in charge of this, and make this work.
Yeah, I agree, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Right, right.
And I think we're, we're, we're there, except for the final dotted i's and crossed t's.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're looking for is a little bit more of the tactical level and kind of a tactical guideline operation. Yeah, right, that's what you'd call in, in ICS, you'd call that an operational plan, and that's generally something that comes out on a, on a day to day basis during the incident. What are we looking to accomplish in this timeframe? How we go about doing that? And those decisions are again made by unified command staff.
Yeah, and that's, that's, if that's in a statement, and we know who's in charge there, and, and if I have to go, if we have to go to Joe, so he directs you, or however it works, it's fine with me, as long as we know.
As long as everybody's on the same.
I didn't feel like I knew last winter. And so, so I, that's, that set me into thinking of worst case scenarios, and obviously, worst case scenario would be that we'd all be running around with our chickens like a chicken.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Heller?
One other thing I'd like to bring to your attention, because I know there's some new board members that may not have seen it, but I think, Joe may have a copy, I've got a hard copy, I don't have a digital one, but I could get one from the regional. We have a document that was adopted in 2019, which is the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a five year plan that looks at the town of Fairhaven specifically, what our hazards are, and what projects the town can undertake to mitigate our hazards, to try to minimize any extent of, any problems we have. And there are several listed actions that we've agreed upon as things to work towards. And I think this is due for readoption in August of 2024, so a year from August, this will be relooked at. So it might be, not be a bad time to take a look at those mitigation strategies, see what, I think some of them we have worked on, I know at this point, we had one emergency shelter with a generator, we now have two, so that's an improvement. One of the things was talking about auxiliary power at our emergency operations center, which we still do not have. So there are, there are things on improvements to water systems, some of which have been done, some of which are being proposed, et cetera. So that would be a good document to review, and going forward, look at things that we may be able to do.
Good.
Just for the benefit of the new members and for refresher for the people who were here in 2019.
No, good information.
Hey, Joe?
Yeah.
Would you, would you want to repeat your, your talk about the fire department a little earlier now that you're here?
Absolutely, time for a little recognition.
Yeah, so.
You gonna give us, you gonna give us a nap or a month off or something?
A nap, probably a nap with the way I speak. No. We, we were talking earlier about, I think you told me that you had nine structured fires already this year.
We've had nine structured fires since the first year that we got operated.
And the board, and I just wanted to say, we really appreciate you and your, you and the members of the fire company, you guys, you're so dedicated, and you put yourself out there, you know, literally your lives on the line, helping protect our families and our property, and we really do appreciate it.
We appreciate the support.
It's a great job.
Because we know, you know, we come in, not, not very often, we do come in, we usually talk big numbers. In fact, we were talking some big numbers across the fall tonight. And we do appreciate the support.
And by the way, and that chief, the police, and support, all these right here, and your mutual aid and everything, same kudos to you and your group, you're doing, you're doing a good job.
Because we can't work separately. In fact, just for example, when we responded to Whitehall last Wednesday, my truck coming out of here, I had three probationary members, I had a Castleton firefighter who also arrives with us, and I had Colton's fire chief on my truck. I responded by myself, and I had an assistant chief from Granville, who also works for the town of Fairhaven and also arrives with us, who met us on scene. So for people who say, talk about regional fire departments, we've been doing this. I don't care what the name is on the back of your coat if you want to work.
Good, very good.
You know, just to let everybody know, it's, it's, we have regionalization, it is here, it's just under a very, very silly looking cover, but we all, it's the same bunch of people. It has to be, because there's just not enough of us to go around. The days of being insular are over.
So, thank you very much. Now, what, what we need to do as a group, back to the local emergency management plan, is get a motion to accept the April, the 2023 local emergency management plan?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion for that?
I'll move to accept the plan.
No, I'll second that.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that something we sign?
This is, so everything will be for Bob to sign?
Right, there's an, there's an adoption form for the, for the emergency management plan, there's an adoption form, a resolution adopting NIMS, and there is the Public Works Mutual Aid Plan, which is also included as an appendix. So there's three separate documents.
So could I get another, a motion for this document and this document as well?
I was gonna say, too, you need, so I'll entertain another motion to adopt the NIMS adoption document for the town of Fairhaven?
I'll make a motion, we adopt that. Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And I need another motion for the emergency mutual agreement for public works departments of its member municipalities.
I'll make a motion, we do that.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, I can come in Friday morning and.
And sign.
Sign all that.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Perfect.
All the regional planning commission, it's been adopted, and we'll get them to sign the copies, and forward them to the.
Perfect.
Do they need them tomorrow?
Hmm, probably not.
I can, I can just, Bob, can I just run over and have you sign these real quick?
Oh, sure, sure.
I'll do that, because it's, I think we're late already by like one day, so I don't want to hold them.
Okay, that's cool.
Thank you very much for your time there, Mr. Heller. Okay, moving.
Take care.
Moving right along, we're at the parking lot. Anything from the parking lot? Right answer, going to board roundtable. Rich, anything for the board roundtable?
We pretty much discussed everything tonight already as far as sidewalks, and that's usually my cup of tea, sidewalks and.
Town, town.
Town garage. We just gotta keep, keep our, keep going forward on this stuff.
All ears on the prize.
I think that we have discussed everything adequately.
Also, the right answer.
Bob, do you have anything?
Actually, no, the, the Scotch hill problem was my main focus.
Scott, the Scotch hill, his main focus was Scotch hill, but he said he doesn't have any.
I don't have anything, no.
No? And, and I haven't got anything, so there was no comments for the roundtable?
Good Lord.
We're gonna move forward to review the financial report. We're going to move forward to review the financial reports. I, I entertain a motion for to pay the payroll for $33,432.67.
Move to, move to, to satisfy the payroll.
Second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion to pay the payroll warrant of $84,255.17.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's an extra warrant, this time it's for after the trade-in, we had to pay for the new, the truck, for DPW, so I need a motion to pay for the truck $34,990.
Move to make that payment.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And the checkbook status, we have $1,093,533.10. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to move into executive session.
Second that.
I have a question about that. Can you, can you isolate me in Zoom, or am I out of the running?
No, we can, you're the only one in the, in the room right now, Bob, but yes, we can isolate you.
Yep.
Okay, I just, I didn't want to screw things up.
No, you're good. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to go into executive session.